We are.
Okay, what's your call this meeting? The order please rise and question flag.
I'm glad to be here to do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to alter or add to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda if there's no changes or that.
I'll support that.
Who can support it? To approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the November 12 meeting.
Motion has been approved, presented.
I'll support that.
Who can support it? Approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $193,337.95. We took in receipts of $79,849.94 and made discersments in the amount of $70,439.19, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $202,748.70.
We make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support it.
Who can support it? To approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. We have no correspondence tonight. Moving on to old business, the park update. The consultant is working on the site plan and the drainage plan. They did come up with a site plan, but it wasn't really what we needed, so they're working on it again. And it should get to hopefully the planning commission in January. I asked Pam whether we did it in December or January would have any effect if indeed we decide to go for some type of grant, which has to be in April 1. She said, no, we have no effect. So we'll do it in January, hopefully we'll get everything up to date and lead all the criteria for a site plan. And then we can, when we get another month or two, we'll offer bids and get the work done this year. So any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. New business, site and EMS contract renewal. Received this in the mail from Jeff White from EMS. Our current contract runs out at the end of the year, so he sent us a new one and it's good for four years. And it's a great contract because they do a great job and doesn't cost us a penny. So we need to, we call it extend or renew, same difference.
Yeah.
For 2022, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the EMS contract renewal from the year 2020 through the year 2023.
Support it.
Who can support it? To approve the contract with EMS. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, they provide seven minutes or less to get to your house from anywhere in the township, seven minutes or less, like you need industry standards.
And they try to keep up with the technology that's available in a really good way with grants and other efforts. They're really, I think, really outstanding service.
There's some fine folks working for them. They do a really good job.
If any of you ever call them, you'll find out they're impressive.
Okay, so who can support it? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill.
All right.
His holiday, yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item B, resolution 201914, millage renewal language. We approved one last month, but we hit a little snag in the language and the county clerk didn't like it either, so we revised one that she didn't like. And we need to adopt this tonight so we can submit it tomorrow.
I make a motion to adapt resolution 201914 millage renewal language. Support.
Who can support it? To adopt resolution 201914. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Pat, yes.
Joe.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. No one has an objection. We're going to switch over Mr. White for a minute. You missed us, Jeff. We already approved.
Yeah, didn't I?
Well, I put it first on the agenda.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I gotta go to Columbus.
Yeah, I figured you wanted to get to Columbus at 7:30.
Came from a meeting as well, so.
So I put it on first.
So goodbye.
This is fine.
This is fine. I really do have a tremendous amount to report on tonight. I thought I would just hand the board out a copy. I thought this might interest you of.
Just.
The first item in the pack that I gave you is just a reminder that we have our January blood drive coming up. We do this one at our station that is at 34900 School Section Road in Richmond Township from 2 until 8 p.m. And again, that will be January 9th, ready for the holidays. The other report that I ran you, it is, it's quite detailed, but hopefully you'll have a chance just to peruse your way through it. It was the last 12 months worth of runs as of December 1st. So it ran from December 1st, 2018 through December 1st, 2019. The, it showed that our average response time in your community for those runs was about eight and three quarter minutes, or just a little shy of nine minutes for all the runs. It lists the runs by type. This is kind of fairly raw data, so literally it runs by the kind of runs that we're seeing in your community. And then on the final page, you can turn all the way to the back, you can certainly look through the other calls there. It showed that over the 12-month period, we'd had 228 calls here in Casco Township. For the record, you were beat up by one by Columbus, who had 229 calls, interestingly in the same month, in the same 12-month period. And your, the fire departments responded with the EMS to 29 motor vehicle accidents and 13 medical emergencies throughout the year. So that just kind of gives you a breakdown of the information on what's going on with emergency medical services runs here.
Thank you.
In Casco Township.
Jeff, when you said no complaints or injury illness narrative, I mean, you guys show up and.
So sure, so a lot of time you'll see those after runs that'll say street or highway. You might see that, that kind of notation.
Yeah.
And what that simply means is that we went to a, we were called to a car accident because people called, you know, on their cell phones. They'll say, it looks like there's been a car accident here on County Line Road. We arrive and the people really aren't injured and interestingly, the people in the vehicle didn't even call for us. It was somebody passing by on the cell phone, you know, trying to be a good Samaritan, calling, saying, boy, this accident looks bad. The person in the car is uninjured. And we see a lot more of that these days, thankfully, because these cars are built so safely. I mean, really, with the, with the front and side airbags and nearly everyone being in a seatbelt there these days, we get into car accidents where people say, jeez, I saw that accident, must've been awful. And we can say, you know, geez, no, everybody walked away, you know, kind of thing. So that's what, that's what we see.
Working on making them safer too.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. The auto engine, the folks that do auto engineering have saved far more lives than paramedics everywhere.
The next thing is where the car will take over and steer or brake you out, or a combination of both, out of danger.
Yeah. So it's, it's exciting new, it's exciting new technology. It keeps all of us, all of our families, a lot safer. So we're certainly big advocates of it, but it is a lot different than it was in the day when two cars hit. You can almost always be assured of an injury. Now it's, it's actually more seldom that when two cars hit hard, that we actually see people that are taken to the hospital.
Thank goodness.
Yes, absolutely. With that, that's really all I have to report on this evening. Thank you again for your continued support of EMS and renewing our contract with Casco Township. It's been 30 years for me in doing this with all of you, and I don't have any intention of going anywhere, so hopefully, hopefully a whole bunch more.
All right. I do have a question. Usually the first week or two of January, I call and get these numbers for the calendar year for our newsletter. Want me to do that again or use these?
I don't think they'll change much, so you're welcome to call. It only takes me a minute to run this report. So if you'd rather have it truly for the calendar year, that's fine, but you know, what you're going to find is over a 12-month period, a 12-month period, I don't think 30 days is going to change it much. So I would say your numbers are still going to be very, you know, maybe they might run to some. If you're comfortable with this number, I certainly would be comfortable.
It's new just for the newsletter, usually putting out new rules.
So yeah, so I would just use this number then. I think you'd be fair with that as opposed to.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
Yep. Have a great night. I am headed to your neighbors in the north, so.
There you go.
Merry Christmas. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, to you guys too. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe.
Yes.
Whatever, that's, we have had a couple of more tragic accidents in our community already as this holiday season approaches.
Yes.
So please try to, please be safe when you're out there traveling.
Are you guys doing anything differently to deal with the recreational marijuana?
You know, really only monitoring it, although we certainly, we've already seen some cases as we haven't even transitioned fully to where people can buy it locally recreationally, but have it.
Medicinally.
A bit easier to obtain, not just medicinally, but they can actually, I think the way the law works, they can have, actually have a certain amount to use recreationally at this point. And we are starting to see some occasional incidents where people are doing things carelessly, not just with regard to the operation of motor vehicles, but other things that we're seeing that have caused some folks some injuries. So if folks are choosing to partake in that, it is certainly lawful to do so, but I suspect we will see, just like we do with alcohol, you know, a certain number of folks who, you know, act more recklessly after they have, after they've used marijuana. It's not enough to have any clear data on yet as far as, you know, whether we've seen any number really increase, but I know of a couple of cases that clearly were related to the use of, the use of marijuana.
I was just wondering if you consulted like Colorado EMSs and if there's anything that, you know, you have to be aware of or do differently because of the law coming in.
Yeah, and that, just be prepared for, you know, an increase of persons that are intoxicated, whether that be through alcohol or, you know, marijuana or other drugs.
Hasn't there been a decrease in alcohol-related problems where it's been legalized and things?
That, I'm just not aware of that, Dan. I'm not saying that's inaccurate. I just, I'm personally.
I'm not sure it is accurate. I've read that in different articles that that has happened.
Okay, I want to hold you up and say you made Columbus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a word for my guys.
You too. Okay, moving on. Item C, board meeting dates, 20.
Okay, I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the Casco Township Board meetings for January 14th, February 11th, March 3rd, April 14th, May 12th, June 9th, July 14th, August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, November 10th, and December 8th. All these meetings begin at 7:00 p.m. here at 4512 Melvin Road, Casco, Michigan.
Alphabell, yes.
Movement supported. Approve the meeting, the meeting dates as indicated. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, the motion carries. The next item, item B, appointment of planning commission. We have three folks whose terms are up and they've all said that we can reappoint them, so we need a motion. And you can do it in one motion if you so choose to appoint Stan Pankowitz, James Edwards, and Gerald Keller, a three-year term on the plan.
Yeah, I make a motion to, to appoint for a three-year term Stan, Stanley Pankowitz, James Edwards, and Jim Keller to Casco Township Planning Commission.
Support.
Who can support it? To make those appointments. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, these guys are learning, especially Jim and Jerry, they haven't been on the board, but they're learning and like stuff like when you're on the planning commission, zoning board appeals, it's something that you don't learn real fast. It's like, I told them guys, I got a friendship. It takes years to learn to get good at it. You hope to retain them and prove as they grow.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, the motion carries. Item F, appointment, nope, item E, appointment of ZBA. We have one person whose term is up, and that's Sandra Bishop, and she is already, and she did too agree to be reappointed.
I make a motion to approve appointment of Sandra Bishop to the ZBA.
Support. I think we're lucky to have her.
Yes, I do too.
Movement supported. To appoint Sandra Bishop to the ZBA for a three-year term. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. Item F, appointment of Construction Board of Appeals. The Michigan law says we have to have a construction board of appeals and they can have a two-year term. These gentlemen have been on it before, but in all the years that it's existed, we've never had a hearing. And I contacted them all and they were gracious enough to say, even though they haven't done anything, they'd be willing to do it again.
Are all these three gentlemen their township presidents?
No, none of them are.
Okay.
Then they didn't have to be. And actually, they shouldn't be.
I don't think they're supposed to be.
They're not supposed to.
They're all, they're all either, either run construction companies or they're in the building trades or.
All right. I understand.
Something.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Lyle Ballard, Robert Caruso, Steve Nickel to the Construction Board of Appeals.
I'll support that.
Who can support it? To appoint the three gentlemen to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item G, planner contracts. We've had pretty much, except they've merged, pretty much the same planning. Folks working for us for 30 years. There's only one gentleman left from the original firm. And one of their employees went off on his own, but while he was there, he worked for us for a number of months, did an excellent job. He's currently working for some of our neighboring townships. And I got a price from both of them and the price from Casson Planning Group. You saw it, it's about half the cost of Giffords Webster. So there's, we're not locked into a period of time, if for whatever reason I can't imagine, because I know Mr. Casson, that doesn't work out, we can stop that and go back to where we were.
Yeah, and you, and you were saying, you mentioned that if here's, I mean, we've gotten, Rod Royal gave us great service through the years, but it almost seemed like Giffords Webster's, they almost have too much under a plate.
Well, they're a very large company.
Yeah.
An expensive company.
And you may like their planner today, but it doesn't mean you're going to have them tomorrow.
Right, yeah. And our, yeah, and Joe Pankerry, he was getting better with us and I saw him really improve. But like Bill said, Steve Case, he's excellent. He's been, he's very experienced. He's just over here in Lennox Township and, you know, he, I think he served us well, you know?
No, I did check around with some neighboring townships and they vary widely in what they do. One township doesn't have a planner at all, no. One of them takes two checks. If they can handle it in-house, they keep the little check. If they can't, they send it out to an engineering firm and give them the big check. So you're not mandated to have, even though we have a planner on contract, you're not mandated to use them, but we usually do.
Yeah.
Because we like to have the oversight. We don't want to screw it up.
Right.
But the cost is getting, as you notice, the cost is getting very high and it's high for the applicants too. You know, you start talking special land use on a site plan, you know, you're up at $800, $900. And it may be a very small thing. So my recommendation is to go with Casson Planning Group LLC.
Yeah, I hate to lose that institutional stuff with Rod Royal, but yeah, we have to look at.
With all respect, you drive a lot.
Yeah.
But this is, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it saves not only the township, but who they're applicants and the residents, a lot of them.
Yeah, Steve is very good.
And we know he's competent.
Where does Steve live from around here? Steve Close?
I think he lives over by Washington Township.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's not as far away?
No. But he works with three communities over here.
Yeah.
Now, Giffords is still going to do our website, but Rod told me that they're thinking about discontinuing that because when they started doing it, they thought it was going to mushroom and be a large-scale enterprise. It hasn't panned out. But he said if they discontinue it, he will give me enough heads up, time to get somebody else. So they've been doing a good job with that and so we'll stick with that. That has nothing to do, it's independent of this service. So if you're so inclined, we need a motion.
I'd like to accept the proposal for planning consulting services from Casson Planning Group LLC. At the schedule of costs detailed in the proposal, I can read that if you'd like.
You can if you want. Yep.
At a rate of $400 per month.
You gotta slow down if I'm right.
Yeah, I don't know how much of this you really do want. I can.
It's right here.
Yeah, that's why I.
Well, approve the document should be adequate.
I feel like it is.
Okay.
At the rates as detailed in the document in the proposal.
Okay, thanks. Support.
Who can support it? To approve the bid from Casson Planning Group for planning service for Casco Township. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it is, I think critically important that you have a planner on staff to apply to some planning matters.
I agree.
Of all the years I've been in planning condition, it's very vital.
And it will save the township about $5,000 a year, which is substantial.
No doubt.
And the people that are applying is going to save them a lot of money.
And Steve knows his stuff.
So, okay, movement supported. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen, please.
Motion carries. Item H, hourly employee pay raise. Currently, our employees, the few that there are, have a, their pay raises on a step scale. We have two employees that have been here long enough, they're at the top of the step. So I'm proposing a 50 cent an hour raise, starting January 1. They currently make $18 an hour and I'm proposing raising it to $18.50. They've been here a long time, they do a great job. It would be super hard to replace them.
Brendan, do you do a great job?
I try my best.
Some days.
Just like my boss.
That's it. Some days. So that's my recommendation.
I, okay, I make a motion to approve the pay raise of 50, 50 cents an hour, starting, was it the 1st of January, 2020?
I'll follow. I'll follow ahead.
Yeah, for, for, for both Linda Lopper and Linda Thune.
Okay, who can support it? The 50 cent pay raise was two ladies mentioned, starting January 1. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, that'll be Colleen.
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Can I share a little story?
Of course. A lady came in, in fact, you're going to see it on Colleen's report, fax fees, $5.50. She needed to do a fax, so I put her on hold and I went and talked to Bill and he said, I think 50 cents a page is fair. So I told her and she came in and she goes, how much did you say it was? I said, $50 a page. And she goes, oh, I don't think I can afford $50 a page. I said, oh, I'm sorry, it's 50 cents a page. So when Bill gave me the agenda, he came in and I goes, $50 per hour. He goes, no, I don't think it's $50 per hour. I said, oh, just like the fax, it's 50 cents.
Inflation, and I'm telling you. Okay, moving on. Item I, NEMC paid franchise fees. Comcast, in their ultimate wisdom, they pay the township a franchise fee for all their subscribers and they also have a franchise fee for Channel 6, which is public television. They used to give public television, which is NEMC, the money. They can't do that anymore. So now they give it to us and we have to transfer it back to NEMC.
Which is wonderful.
So you see the stub here? You're going to get this quarterly, it's going to continue, it's going to be different every quarter. And the one we just got, the paid fee is $1,473.47. So I'd like a motion that, you know, whenever we get one of these peg fees, because we couldn't keep it if we wanted to legally, that we send it along to NEMC.
I make a motion that we pay the peg fees to Channel 6.
Support.
Who can support it? Any peg franchise fees received will be sent to NEMC Channel 6. Is there any discussion?
I just have one. What's peg fee?
Public education government.
Okay.
So to this day, nobody alive knows how many subscribers there are because Comcast won't tell you. Even if you hold a gun, they won't tell you. They'll tell you anything else, but they won't tell you how many subscribers there are. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have the tax bill for the park property that is currently rented for farmland and it comes to $647.37 and we need a motion to pay that.
I'll make a motion to pay the current tax for $747.37 for the tax for the unconsultably rented property.
I'll support that.
Who can support it? Pay the tax bill. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item K, computer purchase. As you know, they use laptop computers at all the elections and they've been telling us for two years that we're going to have to update to new ones because the old ones are still Windows 7 capable only and they're not going to do the job. So last year, they said, well, let us slide to next year while next year's here. We have free election coming up in 2020, so we need the laptops to work those elections. Also, our computer that the assessor uses isn't doing the job and our assessor who works in other townships and our IT person both say that the only way you can stop it is replacing it. So we have bids in place for two laptops and one computer for an amount of $1,619. So, we have bids in place for two laptops and one computer for an amount of sixteen hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents from network computers.
And I just want to bring up the laptops and then these computers are worth nothing. So, I'm going to let Bill do what he wants with them because they're worth nothing. The laptops have Windows Seven on them, there's nothing, you know.
Oh, you mean your current computers?
Yeah, the ones that were replaced.
Yeah, the current ones I have in my office.
They're worthless, you're saying?
No.
They can't be upgraded.
The ones we're replacing, these two laptops and one computer?
Right.
Yeah.
We'll check with our IT guy, make sure there's nothing on a hard drive or anything that shouldn't be.
Right.
And if somebody wants it, we'll give it to them. But, because they're worthless, you couldn't sell them.
Okay, that's unfair.
So, we'll just give them that. Hopefully, somebody that helps the township out, we'll see if they're interested. I don't know if they are, but, so we'll get rid of that one.
All right.
Okay. I missed it. The long day.
That we purchased the two laptops for the elections and the system for the assessor for a total cost of one thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents and that we authorized the supervisor to dispose of the machines after they've been wiped out by our IT guys.
Okay. I'll support that.
Move and support it. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, I forgot. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, next item is payment of the bills.
Any questions on the bill?
I make motion to approve the bills submitted.
I'll support that.
I have a question.
Okay.
How soon after we authorize the payment of the bills do the checks go out? This is not a question really, it's a question that relates to, somebody asked me about that.
They're, they're paid.
They're paid already, they've already been sent out, so there's really no delay whatsoever.
No.
This is post hoc.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That doesn't happen in every township I go to.
Well, I know when I worked, when I was on the school board, our meeting would be on, I can't remember, it's been so many years. But they had a stack of checks there, payroll was exempt and a few other heating and stuff. About that high, in the morning after the board meeting, they went out. They go up to a board meeting because they technically weren't approved.
Sure.
So, maybe technically you could do it differently.
I don't have a problem with it when you do it. Like, somebody has a problem with the way another township does it and that it takes three weeks for them to get their check after they perform services. So, I just thought I'd ask as a reference for them.
Well, we pay, we do payroll and bills twice a month.
Right.
So, I'll make the first one and make the second one. So, okay, movement supported to pay the bills?
Yeah.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes? Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, citizen comments. Use your opportunity, if you want to address the board, give comments or questions. We ask that you give us your name, but if you don't want it, you don't have to.
I'd like to just comment and thank the board on behalf of, very seldom do I speak for Linda, but I think I can in thanking the board for the consideration of the rates. Very much appreciated.
Sir? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Elba and I represent a group that we're looking at buying Michigan Meadows. And I would like the name of a person within the, you know, county government that I can talk to because we have plans for updating the course and the clubhouse. And I want to make sure that we're good citizens, you know, that we're not doing anything that would, that we have, you know, have fairly detailed plans at this point, what we want to try and do with the, with the course. It will be a golf course, it's not a question of changing it.
That's cool.
That's a good one.
Well, to be honest with you, Michigan Meadows came in with a site plan and it was approved and they got a couple of variances and they never did what they were supposed to do. Okay? They were supposed to have a different enclosure for the dumpster, they were supposed to have a burn by county line and a permanent sign instead of the one they had out there. And they're always, they never make any money and that's their own.
And I know why.
I do too. I do too. You know, they don't utilize what they have. Okay, I mean, they got a liquor license, you got a hall. Years ago, they used to have weddings and all kinds of receptions and a pretty decent restaurant and now they're nothing. And, you know.
Absolutely.
Then when the last golfer gets off the course, they're heading for the doors faster than the golf and I understand that. But you can come in and talk with me, that's free.
Okay.
And if you, and see what your changes are. If there are, if there are changes that require a site plan, you might have to do a site plan update. Okay, and that's usually the indoor/outdoor. Now, if you're changing the structure more than a thousand square feet, you're going to need a site plan. Okay? And like I mentioned, they never did what they were supposed to do. And they were hurting for money and I know they were hurting for money. And I didn't take them to court. I left them go because they had been like that before. It isn't like they started it, they just continued what they were doing. And they did get a couple of variances, it was going to take a while to dig that up. If you have a card with you?
Yes, I do.
And I don't know if I do or not.
Just give me your phone number and I'll, I'll call you.
Okay, well, just call the township, it's.
I've called several times and don't get to talk to a person.
Well, it's got to be after three thirty.
Every time it rains.
Nine to three thirty, the only person that answers is the person, there's no machines.
Nine to three thirty.
Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, I answer the phone every time it rains.
Yeah, now, usually I'm here in the morning and sometimes I'm here in the afternoon and sometimes I'm not.
There's a Casco approach on Allegiant Town.
Are you calling the right Casco?
Right.
Are you calling the right Casco?
Well, it's not the one on the other side of the state because I was going to go to their meeting this morning at ten. Put it in, I programmed it in and I go, "Ooh, that's got to be."
Yeah, Allegiant.
Yeah, it's got to be a long way. No, I didn't know of this one here. I've been reading your minutes and, you know, I've been going through your website and reading what's there and then.
Because I can't believe you, that you haven't got ahold of them.
I have called twice, Pam.
Who did you talk to?
Nobody, that's the point.
Well, it's got to be.
You mean, nobody answered the phone?
Nobody answered the phone.
Did you call after three thirty?
I don't, I don't recall that, but I probably did.
We're not open.
And we're not open.
We're not open Friday either, so if you call on Friday.
No, we're not open on Friday.
Last week, we were all, we're all grouped up for Thanksgiving, so.
I understand.
Don't know what happened there.
Have you taken it over? Have you taken the golf course later?
We'll take the whole thing over, yes.
Well, that's good. I like to see the state golf course.
Do you plan to keep the Michigan Meadows or change the name?
Pardon?
Do you plan to keep the same name or change?
Over the golf course.
Over the golf course?
Only the golf course.
Oh, golf.
We're going to, we're going to change the name for.
Oh, I hope it works out.
Yeah, the hall and what they do.
People will be really happy, we have a lot of golfers out there.
We're bringing in people that know what they're doing. I'm the only one that really doesn't know anything, I'm just kind of organizing.
No worries.
The go-to guy.
Yeah.
No worries.
Because you got wooden walk and.
Get in touch and if we have to, you may have noticed in the meeting, we just hired a different planner to work with the township and he's going to start in January. If we need his help, we can question him and try and give you some good information. But you're kind of needing, normally when people call, I tell them to write down what you, like if they buy a business on Reed City Island, write out a business plan, tell me what you're going to be doing and what you're going to do it with.
We already had that, we already, we already had that.
And then I can tell you what you need to do. Because if it's the same as what was done before and you're not changing anything, you may not have to do anything. But if you're going to have it for, you know, like, somebody buys a, it was a paint striping company over on Twenty-Six Mile Road and it was sold and then it got sold again real quick. And so, the lady sent me all the stuff and it's a small trucking company. So, I had the planner look it over and they agreed that she didn't have to do anything because the guy at the painting company had trucks too. So, it worked out well for her, she didn't have to jump through any hoops or do anything like that. So, yeah, when you get a chance, come on in. Just call first, make sure, man.
You're not going to be here tomorrow.
Okay, I got a couple of days between now and Christmas, I'm going to be in Detroit, so.
I live eight miles from here, it's not a great sacrifice to get here.
Okay, well, I'm glad to meet with you, you know.
Did you get the number?
Pardon? I did not get a phone number.
Five eight six, seven two seven, seven five two four.
Five eight six, seven two seven, seven five two four.
Correct.
Bill, how do you spell your last name?
R U E M E N A P P like a call. It's on here if you've got good eyes.
Yeah, I know.
It's on the form.
Did you get that?
It'll be somewhere in here.
I'm sure it's in there in the minutes or something.
It's in here.
Thank you, I look forward to working with you. We want to, we'll change it, we want to change it to a year-round facility, not a seven months out of the year.
Yeah, I was, you know, the last few years, it was kind of disappointing because they weren't aggressive at all when trying to generate business.
Thank you. They, they really didn't do anything, they got themselves into a death spiral and they succeeded.
Well, they tried to sell it to Waste Management at that time.
Yes, to scrape off the dirt and.
Yeah, well, two million yards, it was a scrape. And when they saw what hoops they had to jump through to do that,
Yeah.
Waste Management pulled out because they weren't going to meet their timeline for getting the dirt. And so, it's been for sale for these half dozen years or maybe more. They were trying to sell it, but there's no city water and sewer, so that limits what they can do with it a little bit. And nobody's come up with a better idea, so they still have it outpost. So, it's good. I know a local resident that works there mowing the lawn and he said, "This happens every year." He said, "Oh, there's a hot rumor they're selling it." I said, "You tell me that every year."
Well, they are, they are definitely selling it, they, they have a prospectus put together.
Well, we'll see somebody when they bring in a property transfer to the tax books.
I believe it's at that point. But no, we were, we put together a team focused on, on the issues this course has and the, and the restaurant also. The restaurant is, is great potential, but they just.
It used to serve when we go to.
Yeah, we've been eating there, fathers have eaten there.
Brenda, did you meet the gentleman's side?
Well, the person that, the person that will run the restaurant, he currently runs a hundred and thirty-seat facility with those Class C liquor licenses, you know, he does that and that's his business. And then the other partner, landscaping, professional landscaper. And that's, doesn't mean cutting grass. We don't cut grass. And myself, I'm just the paint. I just look at things, that's all.
The correct spelling is, of your last name is A L B A, Elba?
Yeah, Elba, well, it's E A L B A, and E A L B A. Echo Alpha Lima Bravo Alpha. And we're related to Jessica Alba, she's a cousin. My family has five derivations of this name. Capital D, small e, capital A L B A, DeAlba. My grandfather, when he came over from Mexico, Americanized it and dropped the D. Then there's a whole branch of the family that goes around that says it's E L B A because people have such tough time. Then we have an Irish contingency with Dolby because he was part of the Spanish Armada that sank and he washed up on Ireland. So, we have five different derivations of the same name.
I always go to see you, I remember Napoleon escaped from Muzelba.
Yeah, I know, he was, he was, he was Elba, E L B A, that's nice. The Elba family is very rich, very rich in Europe.
So, can you get Jessica to come to visit you?
Pardon?
Can you get Jessica to come visit you?
My daughter and my niece both look like her.
Oh, we'll, we'll take them back.
Yeah, my, my oldest daughter teaches dentistry at the University of Missouri-Kansas City and she does dental research there, pediatric dentistry. And my youngest daughter, who looks a lot like me unfortunately, she is the head of Ligas Math Department.
Oh, wow. Awesome.
Well, we're glad to have you.
Yeah.
They're, they're successful people.
No matter what those spelling of your last name.
Yeah, no matter which one you pick, it, it works out, they really are somehow.
She goes for the board, right?
If they had a complex name, if they spelled it wrong when they immigrated and hit the border, it stayed like that.
Well, you ought to see my birth certificate, you want to see something that's messed up. I had to explain that to the, you know, when I was getting my passport because my birthday, they had my father's birthday for, it's just, they had names and birth dates all in the wrong place. That clerk must have been enjoying himself.
You're lucky now to sniff.
Yeah, really. I live, I live right across the street from Burning Tree. I better remember there thirty-two years. So, luckily they take food stamps, so I got, got an eye. So, but, yeah, we, we saw this and.
It's a good opportunity.
We believe it's an opportunity.
Okay, I agree.
But I, I would like, you know, to find out all the things that they were promised because I know they, they were not reflected in the prospectus that they gave us.
Yeah.
And we're going to do that and take it off the price.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, probably going to take me a day or so to find the old records.
That, that's why, talking to people that are getting through a lot quicker for what we're doing. But we have put together a plan for what we've done and we've been riding all over that course and meeting with employees. And only one employee is not going to go with us because she's getting out of town.
Oh.
You know, she's not going to work there anymore.
Is that Mary?
I, the cook, who was the John's sister, I believe, you know. She's leaving, but not because of anything we're doing.
Okay, thanks for the information and give us a call.
Will go.
If there's anything else we can help you with, don't be afraid to call.
Well, like I said, I, you know, we've been, we've been putting together plans and what we want to do and I want to make sure that we keep, you know, in line and, you know, be good corporate citizens. Yep.
Good.
So, okay.
If there's nothing else.
Yeah, they have got something.
I, I just have a short report, um, I, some comments. I went to a seminar about the efforts the state is making to, with another planning commission member, to map and do aerial photography throughout the state. And it was very interesting. The state is asking townships and other governmental entities to share information with them and then provide as a basis at least the twelve-inch resolution maps, aerial maps of the state, of their area. But they've also, and then they have some very capable contracts to get this aerial mapping done. And it makes, it makes you feel like a little less cynical about what governments can do because with this mapping, they'll be able to provide real-time information to emergency responders in the case of disasters and be able to actually provide to people who are responding pictures of where to go and how to get access and what has happened and, and reference points to see how bad the disaster was from photographs that were taken before. They also are arranging to provide at some cost, resolution up to one inch resolution, three inches and one inch. And when you look at the, and also three D photography, if you've seen Google Maps, which most of you have, the resolution that they are going to, that this company will provide is just phenomenal. I mean, in fact, one of the major issues that was raised is that it's a, can provide a, a security problem for a person who has that imagery of their property available readily out in the public. And different communities are taking different approaches to how that. to how that one-inch resolution photography and 3D photography is made available and whether it is or isn't. But it's gonna be very instrumental for assessors and other people that need that and can use that kind of information to make their lives better. It's a very, it was a complex and well-thought-out contracting effort at the state level with a whole group of people and experts from Michigan State and other places to put this into, in fact, they've been working on it for quite a long time. It was fairly beyond expectations, I should say.
Well, not covering you. I had a, last Saturday, I was working on my lifetime project up front and I had a truck pull up in the driveway. And the guy got out and said my first name, he said, hey Dennis, how you doing? And I'm like looking at him, trying to figure out what the heck, who he was. And he says, I'm from a logging company and I've been going through the area. And he brought out his phone, which was this big, and he showed, he blew it up and he could see every tree that he was like, this one might be, this one might be, this one might be. Is it a problem if I come out and take a look at them? He was supposed to come out today, but he didn't show, or yesterday, but he didn't show. But he had this map, I mean, of my property. You could see the house, you could see the.
So scary what he can do now.
He just kept making it bigger and bigger and bigger. And I think that that type of technology where you're talking about is a good idea being on from the emergency services division for 47 years. And you need that technology. If you can see that technology on your way to a run, you can always, you know what you're gonna have, you can call for backup or extra vision. So I think it's a good idea.
They showed some examples of homes in subdivisions, large homes. And the kind of imagery that was available, you could see what window you wanted to go in if you wanted to invade that home. And that was of concern and is concerning to a lot of communities to make that kind of information available. However, that doesn't mean the community can't get that information and put together its own protocols about how that would be used or made available and under what circumstances. But for an assessor or a zoning enforcement officer, it could really make their life easier and also cut a lot of costs if you could see what's happening on the property, when it happened, and if it's new. And that's sometimes not so easy to understand from the street. So it's a very interesting seminar.
Currently, the county has photos of the whole county. And the assessing properties, everybody uses them. They're supposed to be, they tell us, they're not the best, but they're okay.
12-inch, I think, resolution.
And they're supposed to redo it next, in 2020. And that was one of the things that meeting was for, to see. Usually, they want all the townships and cities to help pay for it if you wanna use it when they're done.
Wow.
So that's why Dan volunteered.
I believe is offering a program where you provide some street information and other information from the assessing rules and they'll provide that level of resolution of photography for nothing. That's what my understanding was.
Yeah, but.
I'm not sure of all the nitty-gritty details, but there's some options.
Well, when you look at that, the townships and the counties and the states, they're limited on the amount of money they can spend or ask for that. These people, like he's talking about, are private concerns and they, the money, the money just rolls in. They can do stuff that, that the counties and the.
This mapping effort is a state-run effort and they have contracts and they can, townships and other municipalities can contract with the state to get this.
Like you said, you can go to Google Maps and get better pictures of an area. Then you go to the township or the county to get pictures, same picture.
They're better than Google too, but they're not free.
Because they have, they have money.
We'll see what happens. Hopefully, they'll get a little better with the county and they won't charge us an arm and a leg for it. And anybody else have any discussion from the floor? Here, Joe?
Yeah, hey, I just wanted to let you guys know that at the end of the year, I appreciate serving with you. I think there went on the board here. I served with them many years and you guys are dedicated servants of the people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You do too.
Just not here, but outside. Well, I'm very grateful that we're, here in Casco, we're stable. We have stable government and it's been like this for a while and hopefully it continues on. You know, we're training younger people, looking out toward the future that continues on to serve the people and the residents.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, one more thing, I guess. I hope everyone has a blessed.
I was just wondering as an employee, can I get vacation time for next year?
What?
I just wondered as an employee if I can get vacation time for next year.
As much as you had this year.
I'm cheering every bit of that.
Okay. I just wish everybody a blessed Christmas and I hope you have the best of holidays. For myself and the township board. And glad you could come tonight. And if you have any questions, you can always give us a call. We're usually here Monday through Thursday.
Nine to 3:30.
Nine to 3:30.
We don't have any.
You call at 3:30, I think she's gonna. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support it.
All those favor?